Where's my tablet? I feel like I'm missing something. Okay, everybody got quiet. Welcome to our meeting tonight. This is our June 24th meeting of our consolidated agenda. We're going to call it to order and we'll have a roll call by our City Clerk, Marcy Killian.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
Pastor Frank Harper, a member of our community, is going to be doing our Pledge of Allegiance at our invocation, so if you'll all rise and then remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we come before you today, tonight, this evening here in Vista, and I'm reminded of a letter that was written by a man named Paul to his young friend Timothy, who said, "If you find yourself living in a city, that you would pray for them, you would intercede for them, and that you would give thanksgiving for them, especially for those that are in authority." That everyone that lives in that city, in that community, in that place, would have a peaceful and quiet life in all good godliness and holiness. And tonight, oh Lord mighty God, I would like to pray first for this meeting tonight here in the city of Vista, and I'm asking for your mercy, your compassion, your goodness to be here tonight, as our leaders here, appointed and elected, have gathered as a governing body to discuss many items this evening. I ask that all our elected and appointed leaders, for them as individuals, that your mercies, oh Lord, which are new every day, that each would have a disposition to be kind and thankful and grateful, one with another and one to another. And with all the decisions that affect us that live here and have businesses here within the boundaries of this city, that we would reflect that which is being decided and live in peace and harmony in this place. Second, oh mighty God, your compassions, that they would influence every decision that is brought before the council and our mayor and each member of the council, that a deep awareness of the problems that face our city's residents and a keen desire to alleviate these problems would motivate their decision-making. Third, Lord, that goodness would permeate this meeting and each life that is represented here, that the decisions that will be made will be the right thing to do, because it is the best thing to do for this city and for the people of Vista. I ask particular blessings on our mayor, Mrs. Judy Ritter, and our deputy mayor and every member of the council. Special blessings upon them. Special blessings upon all of those that are in attendance this evening, that as we enter into this summertime until we come together again for another meeting here, that your presence would go with us, that your presence would be here this evening, and I just am so thankful and grateful that we have the opportunity to talk to you about it. So I ask you, Heavenly Father, that you would let it be, let it happen, tonight. You may be seated.
Thank you, Pastor Harper. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. The next thing on our agenda is the approval of our agenda by City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda.
We didn't have any closed session, none was held, and so the next thing on our agenda are our presentations, and we actually have several tonight, so I think I'll have my council join me at the -- are you okay to do that, Amanda? Down at the podium, down there. John helping me here. Okay, our first presentation, will Fire Chief Rick Minnick please join me at the podium to present a letter of appreciation to Battalion Chief Joe Napier? Is Joe here? Yeah, there he is, back there. Come on down. Okay. I have a letter of appreciation for you here, Joe.
Thank you.
Let me do this, because I always like you to see the pretty part. They always don't -- so open it up, because it has our pretty stationery. There you go, here's this, and I'm going to read it here. So, "Over the last decade, Battalion Chief Joe Napier has spearheaded a critical project known as the San Diego Regional Public Safety Geographic Information System. This project utilizes the United States Department of Homeland Security Urban Area Security Initiative funds to bring the entire county under one GIS-based map utilized daily for emergency responses. There are 50 fire agencies and 12 law enforcement agencies that participate as regional emergency responders utilizing the database via mobile computers installed in each fire apparatus. The data provides emergency responders the detailed maps, incident routing, premise information, and shows adjoining forces for all incident types. The technology supports boundary drop with adjacent communities and covers more than 4,250 square miles. Under Battalion Chief Napier's expertise, the city of Vista has been the grant fund administrator for the entire North County portion of the project, which directly enhances fire department operations every day. On July 1st, 2014, the county will take over the project and move it to full program status. This means that the project started years ago, in large part by Battalion Chief Napier, will continue into the future under the governance of the County of San Diego's Unified Disaster Council. The mayor and Vista City Council extend their sincere appreciation to Battalion Chief Joe Napier for his perseverance, professionalism, and technical knowledge in transitioning this valuable project to full program status over a 10-year-plus period." So congratulations to Joe, and thank you for that, leading the way in that project. So congratulations to you. Did you say anything?
Well, I'd like to thank the mayor and council. You know, leadership starts with trust, collaboration, and the willingness to see a vision, and our council and past councils and our city manager and past city managers have entrusted me over the last decade to collaborate with our partners in law enforcement, our partners in the fire family, to come up with a way for everybody to be on the same map page and to use technology at our moment when there's fires all around us, to all be on the same page. And so when you see smoke over the hill, you know and you can trust that our council has always been behind us to be on the same map page and has trusted me in order to get this accomplished. So, thank you to council, thank you to the city manager for entrusting me with this project and allowing me to spread my wings and really move this thing forward in a collaborative way. Thank you.
How about you stay there? And we'll do the next one. Let's see, what's the next one? The next one, I need Jeanette Ferris. Where is Jeanette? Here she comes, okay. We're going to do a proclamation for Jeanette Ferris here, and, yeah, you can open that up. We have a -- Jeanette is retiring here in Vista after many, many years of, 36 years actually, of service to the city of Vista, so we are going to give her -- we have very few of these left, but there are pewter plates, and it says Climatic Wonderland, and on the back it has a little inscription that says, "With sincere appreciation for a legacy of 36 years of leadership and dedication to the city of Vista and your loyalty and commitment to public service." So anyway, it's very nice, so congratulations on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And let me read the proclamation here. So it says, "Whereas Jeanette Ferris is retiring, having dedicated 36 years of service to the city of Vista, and whereas Jeanette was hired on May 24th, 1978, as an administrative aide in the Finance Department, coming to Vista after working for her hometown, city of Downey. Jeanette served in a number of administrative catalyst capacities before her promotion to Assistant to the City Manager in 1983. In 1987, she became Deputy City Manager, and in 1992 attained the position of Assistant City Manager. Whereas Jeanette created and implemented the city's first internal risk management program, ran the Senior Nutrition Center, supervised code enforcement and human resources, and served as the city's chief negotiator in addition to numerous other accomplishments. During this time, Jeanette also embarked on the most rewarding projects of her life, getting married and starting a family. Three children later, Jeanette decided to focus full-time on raising her kids. However, in June of 1994, Jeanette announced that she would be leaving the city that September. In August, her position had not yet been filled, so Jeanette agreed to stay a few more months. However, when asked by the reporter if she would agree to stay longer, Jeanette is quoted as saying, 'Like, we need you to work until February? No, I don't think so.' Interestingly enough, Jeanette stayed on until February 3rd, 1995, but then wait, on February 6th. Jeanette's replacement in the Assistant City Manager position, Rita Geldert, decided that Vista just couldn't lose Jeanette and convinced her to return in a part-time capacity. So just three days later, after she said no, on February 6th, 1995, she rejoined the city of Vista family. Jeanette worked part-time in the Finance Department as her children were growing up, and as a business license supervisor, she expanded and enhanced the city's ability to coordinate the licensing of new and existing businesses, introducing new efficiencies and software innovations, and streamlining processes. Whereas Jeanette returned to a full-time position in 2008, and in addition to her work in business license, took on the oversight and administration of the operating budget. In 2012, Jeanette transferred into the city manager's office as the Budget and Policy Manager. She has spent the last two years refining the operating budget preparation process, reviewing and editing countless city council agenda reports, updating city council and administrative policies, coordinating the civil abatement task force, revamping and managing the city's collections process. Based on her work, she was nominated for the 2013 Manager of the Year Award. Whereas Jeanette has provided immeasurable service to the city throughout her career, her attention to detail and thoughtful approach can be seen all over the city. The city owes Jeanette a debt of gratitude for her decades of contributions, and whereas the Vista City Council thanks Jeanette Ferris for 36 years of service to the city of Vista, wishes her well as she embarks on her retirement, and encourages her to continue to explore, dream, and discover new adventures. Now therefore, the mayor and members of our Vista City Council do hereby proclaim Thursday, June 26th, 2014, as Jeanette Ferris Day in the city of Vista. So congratulations, Jeanette. Yeah, stay right there, and we'll just kind of move on here to the other things. Yeah, you take -- is this now, did they finish it? They were -- let me make sure they have the right proclamation in here. Okay, we're good. Okay. The next thing on our agenda, and we have certificates of appointment to incoming commission, board, and committee members. And so I have them here. I'm going to start with Tom Fleming. He's being appointed to serve on the Central Vista Business Improvement District Board. Come on down, Tom. Robert Mans, he's also being appointed to serve on the Central Vista Business Improvement District Board. No, I think we're okay. I think we're okay. I think we're not doing photos of everybody, I guess. Okay, Tracy Lawson. Is Tracy here? Bill DeFuentes, Community Safety Commission. Is Bill here? Oh, there he is. Catherine Maness, Community Safety Commission. Dale Pilot, Community Safety Commission. Cliff Kaiser, Parks and Recreation Commission. Robin Iverson, Senior Citizens Affairs Commission. Okay, stay there. Ah, we got one more. Don't move. No, no, not you, them. Okay, thanks, Robin. We have one more thing here, recognition to do. So now the following is a recognition of participants in the Linda Rhodes Recreation Center mural competition. So will the following student artist join us down here? We have Josh Tremaine, Chase Manrique, and Christina Callahan from Rancho Buena Vista High School. Okay, we have. And just kind of stay here, all the kids can stay here. Nicole Johnson of Joshua San Nichols Rancho Buena Vista High School. Alexandria Leon, Vista High School, and Leslie Ponce, Rancho Buena Vista High School. Are they here? Okay, before I give you these, I'm going to just read this here. It says, "Recognition of the participants. A component of the Vista Academy of Visual and Performing Arts is the development of the Linda Rhodes Community Center. To increase community involvement of Vista's youth, a Community Beautification Day at Vista Academy of Vista Visual and Performing Arts was established. A component of the Community Beautification Day includes the painting of three murals. A contest was posted at the high schools within the Vista Unified School District. Three murals were selected to be painted on the exterior walls of the Linda Rhodes Community Center. On August 23rd, the community can join the artists and the renowned muralist Art Mortimer in painting the murals." And these are the students that were selected, the ones I just called out, and then honorable mention goes to Leslie Ponce of Rancho Buena Vista, but the rest of them were the winners. The teams of Rancho Buena Vista incorporated local team sports and high school colors, which they felt showcased the community. Is that the one? That's not the one right there, is it? That's on the screen? Yeah. Ms. Leon's mural depicts a theater stage as viewed from the audience, while Ms. Ponce's mural represents indoor sports that are popular with men, women, boys, and girls, and create a sense of relaxation, liberty, and happiness. As a thank you for their participation and great efforts, each student artist will receive four tickets to a Moonlight Amphitheater summer show and four tickets to the Wave Water Park. So congratulations to all these students for all that they've done. We look forward to all of the, to the painting this summer, so stop by and see them or help them, actually. I think it's going to be a community thing, right? The paintings, so, yeah, come around her this way. Okay. You can go back and sit down now. Yeah, we can all go back. Are we what? No, you can't leave. That was just the beginning. Oh, okay. You can leave if you want to. So you're just here for your grandson, right? Oh, your son? Okay. You're welcome. Okay. So now we are, that brings us to our consent calendar. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the Clerk's secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. And I do have C4 that's going to be removed, and C11. Oh, just C11, never mind, just C11. So does anybody in our council need anything else removed?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to remove C10 as well, please.
Okay, so C10 and C11 are being removed from consent. So I would take a--
I make a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So then the next thing on our agenda will be item C10, which is the sale of our successor agency and city properties. Would you like a report?
Mayor, John Meyer, redevelopment director, will provide the report for you. Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. For your consideration, this evening is the sale of three properties, one of which is owned by the successor agency that is located at 635 South Santa Fe. This is a property that we received three offers on. It was purchased in 2009, and we are recommending accepting the offer for $207,000. The second property is owned by the city of Vista. It was purchased in the early 90s. We've had two offers on the property, and we are recommending the acceptance of the offer for $68,000. And the third property is actually two properties located at 102 and 103 Buna Place. These properties were also purchased in the early 90s for right-of-way, and we only received one offer, but we went back and forth several times countering with the proposed buyer, and we are recommending a purchase of $80,000 for both properties. That concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions.
Do you have some questions, Councilmember Rigby?
Yes, ma'am, I do, thank you. One particular question I had was, in the staff report, it mentions that the real estate firm that is in charge of the sales had determined the sales price. What index did they use to determine the asking price for these properties?
I believe representatives from Lee &amp; Associates are with us this evening, and I would defer to them to answer how they derive their broker opinion of value.
I would appreciate that.
Is your question just generically how they did that, or was it for a particular, one specific property?
It's generically with regards to all the properties that we're selling and have sold and will be selling. I would just like to know how you arrive at your asking price for these properties?
Put the microphone right around, right to you there.
We used the sale comparison approach, and we basically looked at, you know, what properties, what competing properties have sold for, looked at the average price, and then also looked at the attributes and challenges for the specific property, and, you know, made our basis off of here, here's what the average, you know, building is sold for, you know, here's some of the challenges each property's had, and then adjusted the price.
How many comps did you look at for each property?
You know, it's different for each property. Some of the land properties, there was a lack of sale comparables, so on some of the land properties on North Santa Fe you're referring to, there was probably 10 to 12 properties that we looked at that have been sold in the last, you know, call it 18 months. And then the successor agency property on South Santa Fe, we probably looked at eight to 10 properties that had sold. We also looked at competing properties on the market for sale.
I'm sorry, could you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, we also looked into competing properties that were also on the market for sale and derived at our asking price.
In the same area or within the region? How far out did you look?
We mainly looked at Vista. We did look into San Marcos and Oceanside for some of the properties, but we really tried to find properties that really compare to these specific properties. And, but, I mean, we definitely analyzed the specific area and the specific properties in a specific zone, because that affects the value, and you've got to compare apples to apples, and zoning has a lot to do with that, so we looked at that as well.
Okay. Thank you. You answered my question, I appreciate it very much, and I appreciate you being here in anticipation of my questions tonight. Thank you. I still have concerns, as I expressed at the last council meeting, on the sale of these public properties, since there is no deadline set by the State Department of Finance for the length of time within which we have to dispose of the properties. I'm still not convinced of the commercial market being in a depression for an extended period of time. I think that we could probably do better if we held on to them. I mentioned at our last council meeting that I had read an article a couple of months ago regarding Berkshire Hathaway. Love you guys, you do a great job, for Lee &amp; Associates, and I was intrigued by their thought process. So I did some research into Berkshire Hathaway, and I picked up the phone and I called, and I actually got ahold of the Vice President of Commercial Development and had a nice chat with him about Southern California area. And he did mention, you know, the commercial market has been down, but we are hopeful that it will pick up, and so I just, I hate to see us getting rid of all these properties at a loss. So I'm still going to say I think we should hold on to these, so. But I really truly appreciate you being here and answering my questions, and I do appreciate your due diligence and looking at the surrounding areas, and I know it's not easy, but, and I appreciate all of your work. Thank you.
I would just add to that, as a, it's hard, because as also, sometimes I do commercial comps also, and it's hard to compare apples to apples, and Vista, it's hard to find comps to compare things to, so. And I know that our commercial properties have been down, and the ones that we're selling, I don't see them going up very much in the next several years, so they're in kind of, you know, they're not real desirable properties that people are really after all the time, so. But I think the prices are pretty comparable to what I'd see out there.
In my discussion, the conversation went to talking about Vista-specific, as far as San Diego region being a tier-one real estate market, and my question was, specific is Vista being in an outlying suburb of Vista proper? Would that still be considered? And he said, yes, they thought it would. And what the thought process was, that the market is making a strong comeback, and it's going to make a strong uptick within the next 12 to 18 months. So that's just kind of-- So that's just kind of, I don't know. I'm just thinking, I hate to sell out now and then all of a sudden have the market turn around where we could recoup some of the money that we've spent within the next twelve or eighteen months. So, but, anyway. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Aguilera?
Yeah, I just want to clarify something. So net to the city, we're going to receive approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars on all this property?
The two hundred and seven thousand for the successor agency property gets dispersed to the taxing entities, of which thirty-eight thousand comes back to the city.
So, I mean, even if we look at a ten percent increase in the market, we're looking at thirty-eight hundred bucks to the city. So the way I look at it is, let's just move the property. Someone's hopefully going to be ready to develop this sooner than we can, and I don't think it's worth waiting around for three thousand, seven thousand dollars. That's just my opinion.
Councilmember Coles?
By retaining these, if we retain these in the ownership of the successor agency, what, what is our oversight obligation? I mean, do we have to spend time, energy, or effort to kind of track the properties? Is it, is it better to offload it now while we have customers than to, than to wait?
We believe so. In, in addition to what Count, Deputy Mayor Aguilera said, I would add that we have some synergy building in the Paseo corridor, and I think by selling the property now, we're taking advantage of that activity. And although we won't be getting, you know, we'll be leaving someone else, we rely, if that increase in value occurs, although we won't be getting it, I believe the community will still benefit from it, because it'll provide them additional incentive then to fix up the building and get a user in there.
That's sort of the observation that I've had in, in kind of watching these properties. We had high hopes for our redevelopment plans and projects that we were going to be able to, to assure that, that they were funded and went forward. Now that that's not going to happen, if we've got interested buyers who are looking at the market gaining traction and developing that, as we would have been trying to do anyway, the sooner we get started on having people come in and make some improvements there, I, I'd rather do it now than wait five or ten years and, and not be sure of what might happen. So I, I think I'd support moving ahead with this sale.
Councilmember, to answer the second part of your question, we do have maintenance responsibilities, so we do have to oversee the properties and maintain them, pay a contractor or have city staff maintain them.
And potential liabilities?
Yeah, potential liability, and also thirty, thirty-eight hundred dollars that went up ten percent, we're probably going to pay that in tax, in, on property tax. I don't know if we pay, do we pay property tax? No, never mind. Forget that.
Never mind.
Never mind, I'm thinking like a realtor. Okay. So then I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the item.
Okay.
And I'll second it, that's fine.
Please cast your votes. That motion passes with one no vote. The next thing on our agenda is item C eleven, revisions to the Vista Municipal Code related to electronic smoking. Would you like a report on that, everyone? Yes? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Ally Zimmerman, Assistant City Manager. Giving the staff report tonight is Cheryl Mast, our Management Analyst.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Last fall, the City Council amended Vista Municipal Code regulating smoking in public places to bring the language into compliance with state law. At the May twenty-seventh City Council meeting, Councilman Campbell requested an agenda item to consider amendments to preclude electronic cigarettes in city parks and facilities and to prohibit possession by minors. Upon code review, the city attorney has prepared language revisions to three code sections addressing Councilman Campbell's request. Chapter eight point one-two, Smoking in Public Places, updates the definition of electronic cigarettes. Chapter eight point one-six, Possession of Smoking Materials by Minors, incorporates electronic smoking devices into regulations. And chapter twelve point zero-eight, Smoking in Public Parks, extends prohibition to include electronic smoking devices. Staff recommends the City Council adopt each ordinance amending each code chapter as submitted. This concludes staff's presentation.
I have eight speakers. Would you like to hear from the speakers first? Okay, we'll start out with Gina Knutson, followed by Jesus Menzano.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Gina Knutson. I am the Program Manager of Vista Community Clinic's Tobacco Control Program, and I provided you guys, I shouldn't say you guys, I provided council members with a copy of a PowerPoint presentation that we do around the North County area with several agencies. So if you are not familiar on the topic, it talks about several of the issues and describes the device and why they are so appealing to youth. According to the World Health Organization's background paper on e-cigarettes, electronic smoking devices are rapidly evolving and being marketed similar to how cigarettes were in the nineteen fifties and the nineteen sixties. Marketing is back on television and radio, and there's an aggressive placement of the product in convenience stores next to candy, gum, and ice cream, and in other stores next to medications. Youth are rapidly adopting e-cigarettes, which contain, contain traditional tobacco flavor, candy and fruit flavors such as cherry, chocolate, gummy bears, root beer, cotton candy, and most importantly, nicotine. Flavor is an important product characteristic in determining who is attracted to a product and the ability to get started on a product. The two thousand and twelve U.S. Surgeon General's report preventing tobacco use among adolescents and young adults found that flavored tobacco products containing nicotine are disproportionately used by youth and initiators. E-cigarettes have not been proven to help people quit smoking. Longitudinal population studies show that e-cigarette use is associated with lower odds of quitting. According to the FDA, no brand of e-cigarettes has been submitted to the FDA for evaluation of their safety. The FDA is in the beginning stages of regulating e-cigarettes as tobacco products. Also, the FDA has not approved e-cigarettes as an effective method to help smokers quit. Why would there be three hundred and fifty flavors of e-cigarettes if it's for smoking cessation? The World Health Organization report has several policy recommendations for cigarette, e-cigarettes, and one of them is to prohibit the use of e-cigarettes anywhere where the use of conventional cigarettes is prohibited. We applaud the action today by the mayor and council members to prohibit these devices where traditional cigarettes are banned, restricting minors from entering smoke and vape shops, and requiring these products to be placed behind the counter and sold only through interaction with the sales clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesus? Menzano? Followed by Nancy Logan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. My name is Jesus Menzano, and I am part of the North Coastal Prevention Youth Coalition of the Vista Community Clinic. I could stand here and give you a rundown of facts that could easily, easily be viewed on the internet, but I'm not going to do that. Instead, I'm going to share a story with you guys. My sister, who is eighteen years old, her name is Maria, she works at a pizza shop, and next to the pizza shop, there is a store that sells cigarettes, e-cigarettes, and another variety of tobacco products. My sister comes home, and she tells us that while she works at the pizza shop, on average eight, excuse me, eight hours a day, she sees that most people that go and purchase cigarettes and e-cigarettes are the youth. They're teenagers, they are young people. And it is without a doubt that the marketing companies are interested in enticing the youth, because as the former speaker said, what else would they develop flavors such as gummy bears, chocolate, pina colada, et cetera? I don't think that precisely fifty-year-old man would go and purchase a pink-designed, witty-looking e-cigarette. It is entirely something that is aimed at the youth. Ninety percent of all smokers begin smoking as teenagers. You know, most, one of the, one of the claims that the proponents for e-cigarettes say is that they are not entirely cigarettes, they are a safer version of what smokers like to do. However, it can, it can also, e-cigarettes can become a gateway for students, for teenagers, for the young, to get enticed and to become addicted to smoking. Nicotine is inside the cartridges of the e-cigarettes, and as we all know, nicotine is also very addictive. It leaves the users feeling irritable, depressed, restless, and anxious. Another thing that we also have to consider is that most e-cigarettes, most e-cigarette manufacturing plants are owned by the tobacco companies. I think that as responsible citizens of Vista, of California, and Southern California particularly, we have to be wary when it is the own tobacco companies that own these plants that they say are a safer version of what had made the generation of the nineteen sixties addicted and led to many deaths. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Logan? Followed by Judy Strang?
Good evening. I'm Nancy Logan with San Diego Alliance for Drug for Youth, and our region covers Encinita, Solana Beach, and Del Mar. And all three of those cities have added e-cigs to their already non-smoking ordinance. So I just wanted to share a little bit about e-cigs with you, about, yes, they're a problem with nicotine, but there's a double problem, because they are largely being used for marijuana. There's a, this was a recent, maybe two months ago, article in USA Today, Getting High on the Sly. Here's another one, E-cigs Let You Tok without the Smoke. And also, I'm just going to read briefly from USA Today, "The rise of marijuana e-cigs coincides with the development in recent years of potent new forms of concentrated marijuana extractions in liquid and waxy forms. Those concentrates lend themselves to easily to vaporization and are used to fuel many of the vape pens on the market, though there are also many vaporizers made for consuming marijuana leaves and flowers." And I happen to have one of those right here. I purchased this at a vape store. It is strictly for marijuana leaves. They sold it to me, telling me it's for marijuana. It opens up, you put the marijuana leaves in there, you, it's charged by a battery, and you smoke away. The general population thinks it's a regular e-cig, and there's marijuana in it. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Judy Strang, followed by Janet Asaro?
I'm hoping, City Council members and Mayor, that I could pass this out. Would I just hand it down here? Hi, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. I work with the PTAs in San Diego County. I have a, I'm the Vice President for Community Concerns, and we've been discussing at great length at our monthly meetings what e-cigs looks like to our teen population, and we are gravely concerned about the rapid increase of them by our teens and this whole opportunity for a new generation of addicted smokers. But what I brought with you today is an article that the Board of Supervisor Ron Roberts mentioned at the county board meeting in May, that he had read in the New York Times. As you know, the county did also add e-cigs to all of its smoking regulations, but he particularly drew attention to all of us in the audience regarding the new devices that are coming along quickly behind e-cigs. And there are a couple of pictures in this article that I tried to capture for you, because I think a picture is worth a thousand words. And you can see in the upper picture on the first page, this very large thing, this is a tank system is what it's described, and I'd just like to share a couple of sentences from this article. Unlike disposable e-cigarettes, which tend to mimic the look and feel of conventional smokes, tank systems tend to be larger devices heated with batteries that can vary in voltage, often resembling fountain pens or small flashlights, although I have to admit that looks even bigger than a small flashlight. Users fill them with liquid nicotine or e-liquid, and the devices are powerful, powerful enough to vaporize that fluid quickly, producing thick pumes and big nicotine kick. What I was particularly wanting to call to your attention is the thick pumes, and I think you can see that in the picture up there. Sometimes they're being described as not having any noticeable effect, and I wanted you to notice, this is quite a large second-hand vape that's being, vapor that's being produced. And at the bottom of this page, this new way to use tank system e-cigarettes called dripping, this is actually what Ron Roberts brought to our attention, and on the back, just another sentence. In describing dripping, it says, "Rather than fill their tank systems with e-liquids, experienced users often trickle, trickle down the fluid directly onto the device's heating element, and this practice is known as dripping. With dripping, the e-liquid heats with such intensity that formaldehyde and related toxins approach the concentration of cigarettes." And of course, that's what we in the parent community are so concerned about, that not only do we have e-cigs, but we now have tank systems with these products fastly developing. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Asaro? Followed by Linda Barber?
Hi, good evening. I'm Janet Asaro, and I'm a citizen of Carlsbad, and I am just glad to see that you are also leading North County in adding e-cigarettes to the language of where regular cigarettes are smoked, because it is being advertised to our youth, and as you've heard everyone say before me, that we're going to create another generations of smokers if we don't take care of this in North County right away. So thank you.
Thank you. Linda Barber? Followed by Deborah Kelly?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. My name's Linda Barber. I work for the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network, and we're committed to preventing and protecting the health and well-being of the residents of our community. We recognize that even without sufficient scientific evidence of the safety or health impact of these cigarettes, inaction is not in the best interest of the public health, and we applaud you for that action. The lack of regulation, the increase in use, the aggressive claims and marketing tactics, and the public perception of harmlessness that's unsubstantiated requires that we proceed with actions to reduce any potential harm. And unless and until the product's safety and public health benefit is supported by sound evidence, we're encouraged by your consideration of the prohibition of the use of e-cigarettes and smoking devices in locations where smoking is prohibited. However, we have several concerns that we think we could address, that you could address to make your ordinance more effective at reducing youth uptake and exposure, and we're happy to provide those comments at this point. Under eight one-two, we recommend that you eliminate the statement that electronic smoking devices don't include any product specifically approved by the U.S. FDA for use in mitigation treatment or prevention of the disease. And our concern around this is that if the devices, even if they are approved by the FDA, we still don't want them to be used in public places because of the enforcement confusion and the impact on social norms associated with smoking. E-cigarettes are often made to resemble traditional cigarettes, as you've seen, and as you know, they're available in flavors appealing to youth, and this has a, an effect of rolling back some of the progress we've made to make smoking unacceptable, and this definitely can impact youth exposure and use and uptake. Further, in eight one-six, you have sales to minors prohibited, and it's currently prohibited by statewide law, and levying penalties on youth hasn't been a proven way, proven effective way to reduce tobacco use. So we are encouraging you to focus your ordinance on the retailer issues, but we're thrilled that you're planning to move the products out of reach and out of sight of young people. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Deborah Kelly? Followed by Erica Leary?
Yes, hello. I'm Deborah Kelly. I work for the American Lung Association in California, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'd like to speak a little bit about nicotine and the tobacco industry and kids. A few facts about nicotine. We all know that it's the addictive substance in tobacco products. What not everyone knows is that nine of ten people who smoke become addicted to nicotine, as opposed to one of ten people who drink becoming addicted to alcohol. It's an extremely addictive drug. The tobacco industry has said that nicotine is the perfect drug, and cigarettes are the perfect drug delivery device. And that's because, nicotine is the perfect drug, because people can control its relaxing or stimulant effects by the way they inhale. Cigarettes are the perfect drug- Cigarettes are the perfect drug delivery system because you inhale the product into your lungs, you have the express elevator to your brain, the drug gets to your brain in seven seconds. Scientists know that children become easily addicted to nicotine because it remodels the brain or essentially imprints itself on the brain, because their brains are immature. And in fact, we know the tobacco industry has conducted experiments with kids in elementary school to see how they would react to nicotine. Now, nicotine is a poison. It's used as an insecticide. One of the big concerns with e-cigarettes and leaving things on the counter is, this is, this is e-juice. This is designed to be put into one of the vape pens. It says it doesn't contain nicotine. Sometimes you can believe that, sometimes you can't. It's, the flavor is gummy bears. It's really, really sweet. This size vial could easily kill a small child, and they might not even know, they might not even taste the nicotine because of the sweetness of this. And, you know, the calls to poison centers have increased from one a month to over 200 a month because of the introduction of e-cigarettes. And Dr. Cantrell, the director of our own Poison Control Center, says it's just a matter of time before a child dies because of these. So I wanted to talk, so here you have a product that's addictive, that Big Tobacco is getting into the marketing of it. The Big Tobacco understands how enticing this is to kids. And, you know, I can't demonstrate it here, but Laura Lard Tobacco makes Newport cigarettes. It also makes Blue cigarette, Blue e-cigarettes, which is the most popular brand. And if you go to the Newport website, and I hope you do, you will have to provide a lot of information, including your driver's license and the last four digits of your social security card, to even get into the Laura Lard website, or to the Newport website. If you go to the Blue Sig website, you can get in immediately. So all I can say is we really appreciate all you're doing. We think these are important steps forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'll be very brief. My name's Erica Leary. I'm the Program Manager for the North Coastal Prevention Coalition, which serves the cities of Carlsbad, Oceanside, and Vista to reduce the harm of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs through community action, education, support, and collaboration, and we've been doing so for over 20 years. We're a strong supporter of policies to prohibit the use of electronic smoking devices where tobacco use is prohibited, primarily to reduce youth smoking. And in addition, we believe that prohibiting self-service displays in stores and prohibiting minors from possessing electronic smoking devices in public will further help reduce youth access to and use of such smoking paraphernalia. As was mentioned, we're gravely concerned with the rise of teen marijuana use and the association of hash oil and wax in these devices, and because it's impossible to tell what substances are being consumed by users, we believe that restricting their use where smoking is prohibited will help protect public health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of our public speakers. Now, the last time, we already have, we banned some of these e-cigs in some areas, or some things, and these are just amendments to make it closer to our regular smoking ordinance. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct. There were a few places within a number of different code sections that just needed to be brought up to the same consistency level, adding e-cigarettes to the definition of smoking. Smoking is already prohibited in parks, but we didn't specify e-cigarettes in parks. And then the third one, excuse me, is related to minors. Right now, there, we have laws on the books regarding possession of tobacco products by minors, but in that definition, it didn't include e-cigarettes. So this would include that.
What about, are, can they, is there a way we can ban them from the, like, putting them on the front counters and have them behind the counters? Is that, maybe that's, but, you know, because there's some things, aren't there some things that we've banned from selling at the front counters of stores? Hello, anybody? Attorney, maybe? Because I would not like, because I've seen them on the front of, on the counters, right by the registers, to be selling. I would think that they should be able to put them back behind, like they do bad books and everybody's not answering.
We can, we can look into that. I know we have one staff member who's not here today, who probably could answer that question off the top of her head, but I'm not, I'm not sure of the answer.
Spring that, I knew, I was just thinking about it, because I'd seen them on the counter just the other day. I saw them right, right where I was paying, and they're on the counter, so.
Right, yeah. No, we'll look into that. We can get back to you on it.
Okay, okay. So, Councilmember Aguilera, was that from last time?
Yeah, I was just going to make a motion that we just accept the staff's recommendation. It's just updating, so, if I could make that motion?
Okay. I'll second it, and then we'll just kind of continue on. Councilmember Campbell.
I was actually going to make the motion for approval, but I do want to commend staff on an excellent job on this code amendment that we have before us. I believe that there is a way we should be able to bring this back, if I'm correct, to where we could make a modification that the e-cigarettes and other tobacco products could not be displayed on retail counters.
We'll do some research and bring, bring something back to you.
Okay. But meanwhile, the motion, it covers these things, correct? Okay, okay. Councilmember Coles.
I just wanted to, again, applaud the speakers for bringing to our attention some good data, some good research. People debate this a lot, and we know that debate is always to try to promote sale of, continued sale of things that may very well be dangerous, and the effects of some of these things, we don't know for years out, and I just would hate to have a generation. We can't control the overall sale of it, but where we can, in our public places, and in the way we allow sales, I think we need to do the best we can, and so I, I think it's a great recommendation. I'm glad to support it.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a couple of comments on this, and it was brought up by one of the speakers regarding the FDA and some of the findings with the FDA, which were reeled back by the federal courts because they found that the FDA's methodology and some other evidence wasn't there, that the agency had never actually presented the evidence that the trace amounts caused any harm, and the fact that the scientists had discovered in evaluating the product that the amount of the chemicals in the e-cigarettes were less than a millionth of what is in a traditional cigarette. There was another study, and then the FDA had said in 2000, I think it was 11, that there were some issues, that was their major finding with why they were recommending banning e-cigarettes. They have reeled back a little bit on that, and they are reevaluating it, and I understand that we are still awaiting the recommendations from the FDA regarding national standards for e-cigarettes. They were supposed to come out in February, in, excuse me, April, but they have not yet come out with them. So I'm not sure that I would want to jump the gun before we know the full science that the FDA is coming out with. But I have so many research studies here from all over the globe, and one of them is from Europe. It was a multinational study in Europe that had over 19,000 participants, and of those 19,000 participants, 88 had been non-smokers before they started vaping. More than half of those participants ended up using them for cessation, and so it is an issue for a lot of smokers and now being able to quit smoking. Some of the nicotine cartridges that come with these e-cigarettes have varying levels of nicotine, all the way down to zero nicotine, so not everybody who's vaping is using nicotine. A lot of people aren't using nicotine. Most people who use it as a cessation device actually do end up quitting the vaping eventually anyway. The, the study in Europe said, it went on for, I think, three-year study, they said the average time was 10 months, and then they were not even vaping at all. There, you know, other studies and other comments on this, including the American Association of Public Health Physicians. One of the ways that people are, they're prescribed for stopping smoking in addition to the gum, and they have a patch, but physicians are also prescribing inhalers, nicotine inhalers for them, they, with a thought process that that's not quite as harmful as smoking cigarettes. So the American Association of Public Health Physicians' position on electronic cigarettes is in harm reduction, and that's not a term I've heard used in this discussion previously or this time, in harm reduction. And I know that was something that, I think, when we're talking about regular, traditional cigarettes and the harm of secondhand smoke, and the harm of the lungs, et cetera, to smokers, we want to talk about reduction, harm reduction. With electronic cigarettes, there isn't any secondhand smoke, so that is a reduction in harm that could be done. There's no inhaling of the toxic chemicals, and a lot of the toxic chemicals in cigarettes aren't from the tobacco or the nicotine, but from the whole process and the filter and the paper and other stuff that I've, I've read about. So there, the American Association of Public Health Physicians' status or their position right now, and it says they are still waiting to revise this until the regulatory information from the FDA comes out, but until that comes out, they state that their position is for harm reduction, and that smokers who have tried but failed to quit using medical guidance and pharmaceutical products, and smokers who are unable or uninterested in quitting should consider switching to the less hazardous smoke-free tobacco and nicotine product for as long as they feel a need for such a product. And then it describes different products, and the electronic cigarette is one of them. And also, the American Council on Science and Health has also stated that they would approve the use of electronic cigarettes for the 42 million Americans out there who are still smoking. And one of the comments that was made by the doctor, and all of these are by physicians, some of them at London University, Boston University, University of Kentucky, we're talking notable places and notable doctors, and some of the comments were, particularly, the World Health Organization predicts the death toll from cigarettes in our, in this century could reach the 1 billion person mark, and that is horrible. I agree. But not only are we asking them to quit smoking, which I think they should, and as a former smoker, I smoked 15 years, but I've been quit for 24, thank you. I agree that we want people to quit because the health benefits to themselves and their community, they really need to quit. But sometimes in the regulatory process, we're telling them, not only do you have to quit, but you have to quit the way I tell you you have to quit. And that gum doesn't work for everybody, the patches don't work for everybody, and there are other health issues with those as well. And I think the real problem, and this is a quote from the head of the American Council of Science and Health, "The real problem facing responsible public health authorities remains today as it has been for decades, in that we want to reduce the toll of preventable deaths from smoking. And right now, we do have groundbreaking technology in the long and bitter fight against cigarette smoking, and I think electronic cigarettes is one way to do that. And I think if you're looking at public health, there is no secondhand smoke. If you're looking at some type of, not being able to tell the difference when you're looking at trying to enforce a smoking ban, traditional cigarettes and the new electronic cigarettes don't really resemble each other very much. The cigarette, the electronic cigarette makers are trying to get their product to not look like a traditional cigarette. They're, they're different colors, they have glow at the other end that are different colors, they have designs on the end that, where a cigarette would be lit, it would have a smiley face, or a heart, or a flower, or a mustache, or all kinds of things, that you really cannot mistake an electronic cigarette for a real cigarette. So I don't think that there's going to be a lot of issues in public places where somebody's smoking a cigarette, and people are going to go, oh my gosh, they're smoking a cigarette. It's an e-cigarette." So I think that when we're looking at the issues that were brought up about people using them to quit smoking, yes, that's a valid point. I believe that to be a valid point. There are so many articles, so much research, and so much testimony from people who have quit using the electronic cigarettes. And I do know that there are a lot of people who, who don't use the nicotine portion at all. I do agree that it needs to be kept away from the youth, and I think that that's an enforcement with law, law enforcement, just as it is with cigarettes, just as it is with alcohol and other banned products that youth are not supposed to have access to. So I would support a ban for, you know, continuing the ban of tobacco or electronic cigarettes to the youth, but I would not support an electronic cigarette ban as it's presented here for the rest of it.
Councilwoman Campbell, I'm going to take the attorney first, Neil Piper, and then I'll take you, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to draw the council's attention to Section 8.16.035, which is actually carried over from the existing code, and it makes it unlawful for any self-service merchandising of cigarettes in the city of Vista. And self-service merchandising means an open display of smoking materials that the public has access to without the intervention of an employee. And I believe that may address the issue that was brought up earlier, and as I say, that is a, something that derives out of our existing tobacco control ordinance. Thank you.
Actually, I read that, but I didn't think it went far enough, because I thought it could, they're just like there on the counter, so.
Thank you, Mayor. It's talking more about displays on counter.
Yeah. So I'm not sure of that. Anyway, okay, Councilwoman Campbell.
I believe the city attorney actually addressed part of the section that I was going to ask about, to see if that would cover display of the materials on the counter, whether that would constitute requiring intervention of the employee for access to that material, or if maybe we'd need to, in a future date, come back and specify more specifically that it would need to be behind a retail counter, inaccessible by members of the public to reach. One of the things that, if we're on that topic, if the council be amenable when we bring that back to look at in the future, is one of the things that I've noticed just in the last couple of weeks really start to pop up are the large advertisements at, like, the 7-Elevens and convenience stores outside in the parking lots, that are very similar advertisements to how years ago you'd see cigarettes advertised, you know, these three-by-four-foot placards attached to the light poles in the parking lot, so it's very clearly visible that they're advertising, you know, e-cigarettes. It looks like cigarette packaging and marketing, and the prices on there, making sure that people know, you know, we have them for sale inside. I think that kind of goes along the same line potentially, as if we wanted to look at something like that, too, is the marketing of e-cigarettes as the marketing of tobacco products, if that's something we're willing to do. But on this particular item, I'm very supportive of all three amendments, and would like to see this go forward.
Okay. Councilwoman Coles.
Yes, thank you. And I, I like also to look at how we can further restrict access to the products. I was at an event yesterday where I was offered free e-cigarettes. It was not that I, they weren't in any way an effort to stop smoking cigars, it was just an alternative to go a different route. And, and I remember growing up, watching television ads with doctors smoking cigarettes and promoting tobacco sales. So, you know, there's a lot out in front of us in terms of what the impact of this new sales product might bring onto the young people and as they age into older people with health issues. And, and at this point, we're not, we're not debating whether there's goodness or badness, and I, I agree, smoking cessation is something that we should all strive for avenues to, to provide that. And, and I think science can help us with finding avenues, even if it is with using vapors, but as was, as we know now, these e-cigarettes are used for a multitude of things other than just the smoking cessation. That was the entry point, but now they've gone way beyond that, to where they provide access for multiple ways to abuse chemicals with young people. And, and after all, our action here is simply to protect our public places in our city and our sales access, so I, I think we need to move forward with this and.
And to protect our kids. That's probably most important in my mind. Councilwoman Aguilera.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just reread this Section 816.035 and Section A, and I think the, the city attorney is correct. If you, there's vendor assisted means only a store employee has access to the product and must assist the customer by supplying the product, and the customer does not take possession of the product until it is purchased. I think he's correct.
Well, I read that, but, but when I, when I'm at the, when it's on front of me on the counter, and the cash register is here.
You can touch it.
I, I can touch it, yeah, so.
So that would.
So, so, so can the kids touch it?
Right. So I'm, what I'm saying is I think that if we just enforce this rule here on the books.
So it just says whoever's on the other side of the counter just can sell it to me, right?
What's that?
The person on the other side of the concert, on the counter can sell it to me, who was, who was at the register, the, the person I'm buying it from.
I believe it means it would need to be behind the counter.
It would have to be behind the counter.
Yeah.
Because if it's on the counter, you can touch it.
You can't, you wouldn't, you shouldn't be able to access it without the salesperson providing you the access. So that would mean it shouldn't be right here on the counter in front of you, it would need to be on a shelf perhaps behind.
Okay. Okay, then I'm good with that.
I think it's more of, uh, enforcement than anything else.
Okay. Okay, so I guess we're okay with that, and we don't need to bring it back, right? Then we're okay?
I think so. It sounds like it's.
Sounds clear to me.
Okay, then we have a first and a second, we have a motion and a second already. So please cast your votes. Motion passes with one no vote. Okay.
Madam Mayor, before we move on, may I make one last comment? A lot of the research shows that, as we discussed at our last meeting when we talked about this in October, the amount of smoking that's going on now compared to 30, 40 years ago is, is a fraction. And that's because of education and outreach through programs like yours, and I do applaud you for that. And it is recognized that education is the best way to get people to quit smoking and that a lot of other ways of doing it aren't as effective as the education and the outreach that you have. So I just want to let you know that I do appreciate what you do in your programs.
With that, we will move on to our discussion item and our first public hearing. So we'll open the public hearing on food vending, um, vehicles.
Mayor, uh, our Assistant City Manager, Ali Zemmern, will be giving this report.
Uh, good evening again. For your consideration this evening are modifications to the Vista Business Park Specific Plan and the Vista Municipal Code relating to food vending vehicles. Under the current municipal code, food trucks, uh, may only park on a public street and are basically limited to a 30-minute duration wherever it is that they're going to be. And there are a number of other restrictions that are included in that. With the influx of the brewers industry that we've all seen and, and support in our town, we've seen a number of, uh, the brewers in the business park who are challenged with finding a way to provide a food service component for the, um, for their patrons and the option that they've been using, and this is actually something that you, that we see all over the county and the state, is to have food trucks come in to provide a kind of to-go food option for the patrons. You can order something from the truck and then bring it back inside the brewery or California Fruit Wine or whoever's coordinating it to enjoy with your beverage. This isn't, these generally aren't the types of food trucks you imagine that kind of pull up to a construction site. These are somewhat a little bit more, some of them are actually gourmet, they're higher quality, uh, fresh food made to go, there are sushi trucks, uh, fish taco trucks, barbecue. And what they will generally do is work in coordination with the breweries to have a schedule where a certain truck will be featured every Wednesday or every Thursday. We haven't received any complaints yet about this practice, however. The fact that they're staying typically for the duration that the business is open means that, that what they're doing is currently not allowed under our laws. So we're working with the Brewers Guild, um, and Community Development, we have come up with some modifications recommended to the council that would allow, um, the food use within the Vista Business Park Specific Plan and Specific Plan 14. This isn't something that could happen in other parts of the city, um, none of the commercial zones would be impacted, and we really wanted to focus on supporting the, the breweries without impacting any of our brick and mortar restaurants. So the recommendations as they stand, um, would allow for one food vending vehicle to be on private property at a time. The food vending vehicle would need to be primarily serving the persons who would be in a qualifying premise. And in order to be a qualifying premise, you have to have an ABC license, either a, a type two, which is the wine grower, this covers our wineries, um, or in the business park, the One Winery, California Fruit Wine, a type 23, which is what all of the breweries have, it's a small beer manufacturer's license. And then, um, at the request of the Vista Brewers Guild, we included type four. This is a distilled spirits manufacturer, we don't actually have any of these at the moment, but we've been working, um, economic development has been working with a number of, of small, uh, craft, distilled spirit manufacturers who potentially would come in, and we thought we would include that as a, as an ancillary use as well. The vehicle would be allowed to stay on the premise, um, obviously for longer than 30 minutes. Um, the duration, the hour, the limits of the hours would be, be no longer than between 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, but it would also be tied to the hours of operation of the qualifying premise. Uh, for example, Iron Fist, uh, on a Wednesday would open at three and close at eight, so the truck could come in a little bit before that to do some prep, um, and could stay a little bit afterwards to close, but they couldn't stay until 11:00 in the case where the business is closing at eight. Um, and the other one item is that the vehicle must be within 75 feet of the premises, so they're not going to be across the street, you're not going to have people traipsing back and forth. Generally speaking, they're going to be in a parking space that's very close to the, the business's opening, um, staying out of fire lanes and out of any restricted access areas, but being on private property, which is something that isn't allowed at the moment. We are required to have a public hearing on this item because the, there's a change in the Vista Business Park Specific Plan, and that change is, there are a couple of the food vending, and this falls under the proposed definition, that aren't necessarily a truck. It may be a, um, some catering that's done on a, a trailer that comes, you know, specifically with barbecue, they'll, they'll pull in the, the smoker, but then serve the food from a, a tent, which would be right adjacent to the business, and the current specific plan does not allow for tent uses. So in conjunction with restricting it to the, these uses, um, the business, the specific plan would be modified to allow for the tent uses, and then the Vista Municipal Code includes the modifications on the hours, um, the adjacency to the qualifying premise and, um, the one vehicle at a time. Um, the Planning Commission heard this item in April and provided unanimous support for the changes. I made a presentation to the Vista Brewers Guild a couple of weeks back, um, they provided some input and they're supportive of this as well. And that completes the staff presentation. Patsy Chow and I are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, any questions down here? I have, um, two public speakers. No, I don't. No, I don't, never mind. Those are in public communications.
I would move that we close the public hearing and accept staff's recommendation.
I'll second it.
Okay, and the only question I have is, what if, what if, um, one, what if one of the trucks came and just parked, parked there and the, the brewery wanted a different truck there? Is there, are they, are they tied to the business somehow, or are they just, anybody could be the first person there and they parked by the?
So far, it's been a self-regulated industry. The breweries are finding that one of their selling points for getting people to come down is having a schedule of food trucks. So they have worked and coordinated with the truck that they would like on a particular night. And what the trucks are seeing is it, it really isn't in their best financial interest to just kind of show up if they're not the featured truck, because they want to stay for a couple of hours and set up and, and be able to, you know, basically provide, that be their, their location for the night. And another truck coming up that's in another place, it just, it doesn't work out, it hasn't happened.
Okay, so they would be, but anybody that wanted to show up would not be precluded because they were there first, and they could just park there and they could be the one truck, right? I'm just.
That wasn't my understanding.
I, I guess in theory that could happen, but it, this, they've been doing this for about a year, and so far, it has been a very coordinated effort, and the breweries have been supportive of it because they are working in conjunction with a specific truck for each night.
I, I don't have a problem with it, I was just, just trying to look down to the future and see if there could be a problem happening, so.
And I think if there was, the brewers would probably let us know, "We have a really good relationship with the Guild," and if they're seeing any issues, they'll bring it to our attention, we can have.
Let me come back.
enforcement, look into it and see if it's something.
Well, it looks like John has something to say.
Assistant City Attorney, John Stone.
Uh, yes, Counsel, uh, Mayor. The truck can only locate on the street for 30 minutes. If they locate on the private property, they have to have the permission of the owner. So it would be only the invited truck.
Okay. Okay, well, that, that fixes that. Okay. Councilmember Aguilera, you have a question?
I was just going to clarify that, I, because the city manager and I discussed this earlier, so.
Oh, you did? Oh, okay.
Get a lawyer involved.
Sorry, you know, I'm thinking too big. Okay, so do I, do I have a motion and a second? So everyone, please cast your votes. Wait, no, wait, wait, don't vote, are you saying? Oh, yeah, okay. Motion passes unanimously, so that, that is the end of our agenda. So now we will go to oral communications, and I have two. I have Teresa Smith followed by Sarah Kelly.
Hello, City Council and Mayor. As you mentioned, my name is Teresa Smith, and I am the Director of Dreams for Change. And as many of you know, Dreams for Change operates San Diego County's only safe parking program for the homeless living in their vehicle. Back in September, at the, back towards the end of September, this, the city responded to our program and stated and claimed that underneath Vista's Development Code, the safe parking program is a transient trailer park or emergency shelter, and that means any premises which there is located one or more vehicle for the use of human habitations who stayed on a premises day, in day-to-day basis, is subject to possibly a misdemeanor persecution against the person who camps on these private properties. Also, as what the Vista Code has, um, defined to us, that camp means use of public property for storing personal belongings, including but not limited to clothing, sleeping bags, backpacks, or living in a parked vehicle. These activities constitute camping when it reasonably appears, in light of the circumstances, that these participants in conducting these activities are in fact using the area of living of accommodation, regardless of the intent of the participants, or the nature of these, any of these activities may also be engaging. I just wanted to, uh, come before you to kind of keep the city council and the city apprised of the current situation. Since October, when we closed, um, or were forced to close our program here in Vista, we have received over 75 calls inquiring about safe parking in the region and access to additional social services, let alone the number of other service providers have, um, have not referred due to the knowing that we are not present. Just as before, the need is still forever present, um, here in the region, and we still are here and willing to help address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Kelly?
My name is Sarah Kelly, I'm a board member of Dreams for Change and also an attorney. As you may be aware, the US Circuit, or US Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit filed their decision on June 19th in the Desertrane v. City of Los Angeles, uh, case regarding Los Angeles's ordinance prohibiting living in a vehicle. I'd like to read a few important points from that decision that may be applicable in Vista. The court stated, "A statute fails under the Due Process Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment if it is so vague and standardless that leaves the public uncertain as to the conduct it prohibits. Vagueness may invalidate a criminal law for either of two independent reasons. One, it may fail to provide the kind of notice that would enable ordinary people to understand what conduct it prohibits. Second, it may authorize and even encourage arbitrary and discriminatory enforcement." Under LA's enforcement practices, sleeping in a vehicle is not required to violate the statute, but there is no way to know what is required to violate the statute. People are left guessing as to what behavior would subject them to citation and arrest, and this broad and cryptic statute criminalizes innocent behavior, making it impossible for citizens to know how to keep their conduct within the pale. The court said, "It is difficult to imagine how anyone loading up his or her car with personal belongings, perhaps to go on a camping trip, and parking briefly on a street, would know if she, he or she was violating the statute. What's worse, even avoiding parking does not seem to be sufficient. Any vacationer who drives through Los Angeles in an RV may be violating the statute. As the city cannot conceivably have meant to criminalize each instance a citizen uses a vehicle to store personal property, vagueness about what is covered and what is not is what dooms this ordinance. A statute is also unconstitutionally vague if it encourages arbitrary or discriminatory enforcement. If it provides no standards governing the exercise of discretion, it becomes a convenient tool for harsh and discriminatory enforcement by local prosecuting officials against particular groups deemed to merit their displeasure. LA's statute has paved the way for law enforcement to target the homeless and is therefore unconstitutionally vague." The court concluded, "The statute provides inadequate notice of the unlawful conduct it prospers and opens the door to discriminatory enforcement against the homeless and the poor. For many homeless persons, their automobile may be their last major possession, the means by which they can look for and seek social services. The city of Los Angeles has many options at its disposal to alleviate the plight and suffering of its homeless citizens, selectively preventing the homeless and the poor from using their vehicles for activities many other citizens also conduct in their cars should not be one of those options. My question for you is, in light of this decision, is the city of Vista going to allow the safe parking program to resume operations immediately on private property to provide much-needed social services to Vista's homeless living in vehicles?"
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker, Cliff Kaiser.
Mayor, Counsel, just a quick reminder about the Taste of Vista in downtown Vista tomorrow afternoon and evening from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. Tickets are less costly than they were last year, it's $14 for, I'm sorry, $15 for food only, 25 for food and drink, kids under five are free, uh, between six and 12, it's only $5. There will be tickets at the door, but the sale price ends at midnight tonight. So get them online, uh, go to the VVBA.org or Taste, or TOV eventbrite.com. Thank you.
Thank you. I need to do that. Okay, um, so that concludes our speakers, and so I will, um, do our announcements here. Two weeks ago, our San Diego House, uh, County Housing Federation presented its annual Ruby Awards, and we got the nicest award, it was, and it's so heavy, it's beautiful.
It's a real ruby.
It's a real ruby, yes. Put that on my finger. And we got the, and so we were, um, nominated by Community Housing Works and Affirm Housing nominated our city, and the award was cited the city's redevelopment and housing, um, and community development department's strategic approach, efficient permit processing and support of the two affordable housing projects. And so we were named the Outstanding Government Agency for 2014, which is a nice award. In addition, um, the following four awards were received for projects within our city. Um, San Diego Gas and Electric Efficiency and Sustainability Award for retrofit was the Los Robles Apartments, uh, Community Housing Works, and they did a great job on that project out there. They did like solar on top of the parking structure and New Kids Lot, and it was, they, it's beautiful, but they, the rehab that they did there. Um, the Outstanding Development Partner was Sun Country Builders. Uh, Housing Project of the Year for Special Needs was, um, Vista Terrace, um, over on Postaway, where Solutions for Change did a total remodel there and, you know, made really nice apartments out of some real old ones. Our Housing Project of the Year for Rehabilitation was Los Robles Again Apartments for Community Housing Works. And so that was five Ruby Awards. We were, people were just like, "Oh, it's Vista again," so it was kind of, kind of neat to get all those awards, so. Join us on the Independence Day for the Fourth of July celebration at the Moonlight Amphitheater in Bringle Terrace Park. That's going to be, um, the tickets are $5 per person, under six are free, as well as, uh, military families with their ID. Get Back Loretta is a local band that will perform on the moonlight stand before, um, the fireworks display, which brings, the, the display begins at nine. So go to cityofvista.com for more event information. Um, and as Cliff mentioned, the Taste of Vista is set for tomorrow night from 4:00 to 8:00, and the tickets, VVBA.org, they're still available on sale till midnight tonight, so get your tickets. Now this, and that won't go on TV till Friday, so it'll be way too late for that. So any, any comments from our council? I'll start with Councilmember Rigby down there.
I think my fingernails get in the way of the buttons here, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say that, uh, last week, I went up to Sacramento for the California League of Cities meeting for the Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee, and as always, they're talking about different ways to lower the threshold for voters to approve taxes, which, anyway. Couple of the other items that we talked about that might be of interest to the city, they're, they're informational, and we're still working on legislative action. One particularly is about incorporations in, and annexations, trying to create economic zones in California to help offset what the state has done as far as the business climate and people fleeing. So they're trying to create zones, but there's some legislative action on that that we're working on. And there are, uh, a lot of bills with, uh, trying to lower the, the voter threshold required to raise taxes, which I'm, as a council, I'm not sure what our position would be as a person, as a resident of California, that disturbs me. And I also went to the San Dag Public Safety Committee meeting this last week, and the county of San Diego has, has prepared their after-action report for the wildfires that happened in May. They're the only jurisdiction that has, uh, finished their after-action report, some of the other jurisdictions will have them for us at the next, um, Public Safety Meeting in July. A lot of good information in here. Uh, one of the things that I took away from this was the cooper. the cooperation between all of the cities, even cities like Vista that we weren't personally affected here in our jurisdiction by the fires, but our fire department and our sheriff's deputies department were very instrumental in helping our surrounding areas, and I applaud our sheriff's department and our fire department for their work and their due diligence in other areas, as well as continuing to keep Vista protected like you did, so thank you for that, you did a great job, and it did not go unnoticed by our surrounding communities. The other thing was with the military, even though Camp Pendleton had a lot going on themselves, they still, we still had use of some of their air equipment to help with the fires here, so we really appreciated that. And if you want to read the report, if you really are a political wonk like I might be, it's available online from the San Diego County government website, so you can pick it up there, and that's all I have, thank you.
Councilmember Coles?
Yeah, Cliff, thank you, I'm looking forward, my granddaughters are coming down tomorrow from Granite Bay up near Sacramento for a week with us, the first thing we're doing is going, taking them to the Taste of Vista, we already have our tickets, but I'm going to get one more because I want to take my sister. And I'm looking forward to that event, as well as this, all the summer attractions that I can show off to my granddaughters while they're here for a week, and that's all I have.
Councilmember Campbell, no? Councilmember Aguilera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to wish everybody a happy and safe July 4th, and remind everyone that the Alta Vista Gardens will also be, or are selling tickets for the fireworks show, their claim to fame is the best seats in the house for the fireworks, it's right on top of the hill at Bringle Terrace, so it's a great place, and beautiful to see the botanical gardens up there, so, that's all I got, thank you.
Okay, one thing I have would be, at the San Dag Transportation meeting last week, they talked about grade separations, and so we're like way down on the list, probably number, I think number 16, and Civic Center Drive is before Vista Village Drive, which I thought was interesting, but there will be absolutely no money for any of them until, for 10 years, so we have to, and in 10 years, then we'll start with the ones on the top, so we're like 20 years out for any money for grade separations for our sprinters, so I'd say that. So, and happy 4th to everybody, and on to my city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to let everybody know that our first movie in the park last weekend was a huge success with a lot of people at Buena Vista Ballfields, and our next movie is Despicable Me Too, which is July 19th. And then, since we won't have a council meeting after that until the next movie, August 9th is our Fun Fest at Bringle Terrace Park, and we'll show the Lego Movie that night, so the Fun Fest will take place between 3:00 and 7:00 in the afternoon for families and kids, and there'll be a lot of activities, so please don't forget about that. Coming up this weekend, the Scottish Highland Games are going to be at Bringle Terrace Park as well, so if you would like more information on that, you can go to SDHighlandGames.org for event details. And you may see a car with the sign on the side that says Cartograph, and it's got a camera on the top, and it's driving around the city, collecting information on our infrastructure and roadways, and so if you see that car, it'll be driving through the city between now and June 30th, no need to be alarmed, but they're doing work for the city and collecting information for us. Two more items, one is that we'll begin the process of slurry sealing and improving our roads with rehabilitation projects going on through July to March. So there'll be various roadways throughout the city that are being improved, there'll be some minor inconveniences at the time when they're in specific areas, but the benefit is we'll have new and improved streets as a result of that, so please be patient with that. And the council meeting for July 8th is going to be canceled, and so our next council meeting will be the second meeting in August. So I hope everybody has a nice summer break, at least from the meetings themselves, I know you'll still all be around.
At least from these meetings, huh? Okay. Our city attorney, Joe Piper, do you have anything today?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I would report that last week I was also in Sacramento, attended the meeting of the League of California Cities Transportation Communications and Public Works Policy Committee, and to summarize, the good news from there is there will be some more transportation funding available to cities in the upcoming budget. The actual amount available to Vista should be out, certainly within the next week, there should be a schedule that would show what that is. On Friday, I attended the League's City Attorney's Department Legal Advocacy Committee meeting, I'm a member of the executive board, and we had the pleasure of determining what was going to be done with respect to a number of lawsuits in the state of California that involve cities. And other than that, a happy Fourth of July to all.
Thank you. City Clerk, Marcy Killian?
Yes, I did want to mention that Saturday, July 12th, is the Second Annual City of Vista American Cancer Relay called Relay for Life, it's a 24-hour event, and we have a City of Vista team, and it encompasses anyone that wants to join, so if you would just look up on the website, Relay for Life, City of Vista, join our team, come out and help us walk some laps, it's going to be held at Rancho Minerva Middle School, and it starts at 9:00 a.m., and it goes all the way to the next morning, 9:00 a.m., and I believe the mayor's going to come out and start our day, and survivors will be there, and we encourage you to join us, thank you.
Amanda, down there, nothing down there? Okay, with that, we're adjourned at 7:07.